I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the Town of Pecos City Regular City Council Meeting. Today is Thursday, February 13th, 2025, and it is 5:30 PM. Let the record show we have in attendance, we have Councilman Zaldania, Councilwoman Seals, Councilman Graham, and Councilman Arona is here, he just had to step back. At this time, we'll have an invocation from Councilman Graham and a pledge of allegiance. You want to do the prayers?
Yes ma'am.
From Councilman Arona.
Father, we are so grateful to be here, and grateful to be with the mighty and awesome God that you are. Father, we just ask for your wisdom and knowledge and understanding in the matters before us and the matters that come before us in the future. Father, we, again, we're so grateful that you've done and waited for us in Pecos in the recent years, Father. We know that everything comes from you, in Jesus' name, our Father.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that Councilman Trujillo is here also. At what time? At 5:30 PM. This time, we will have public comments. Just remind you that this is a time for residents to share with the council any comments, concerns, and/or complaints that they have. It is asked that each person limit their time to three minutes, as we do have other scheduled items to cover, and just remind you that we, as a council, cannot respond to your public comments, but you can have it brought up as an agenda item on a future meeting. But this time, are there any public comments? Yes ma'am.
My name is Raymond Crowe. I'm formerly employed with the City of Pecos, as the employment recruiter for the City of Pecos. I'm an actual homeowner in the City of Pecos. I live at 1510 Mimosa Street. I care about this community, and so that's why I'm here. This whole thing started out with a loss of sleep over whether I should remain loyal to my supervisor or the organization. I know now I should have been loyal to my community, and my community is what matters most. Unlike some of the upper management in this organization, I do own property here. As of February 4th of this year, I was terminated from my position with the City of Pecos for reporting racism, corruption, and violations of both state and federal law. I provide administration with documented evidence, facts, not opinions. I also have audio evidence of these violations. Unfortunately, instead of addressing these serious concerns, I was retaliated against and dismissed from my position under the pretense that it was no longer needed. This actually directly violates the retaliation whistleblower act protection policies for both City of Pecos and the State of Texas. Further compounding the issue, I did not receive my final paycheck until February 13th, 10 days after termination, despite state law requiring payment within six days. Additionally, while I was informed that I am rehireable, I was not even given the opportunity to transfer to another position. More further accounts of retaliation. I want to bring to the City of Council's attention that the Director of Human Resources and the administration is knowingly violating both federal and state laws while punishing employees who expose these infractions and express their concerns. I engage the council members or the mayor to review the written documentation and listen to the recording conversations that I have that provide clear evidence and proof of these violations. My phone number and address are on file, you're more than welcome to come over and call me anytime. I sincerely hope the city takes the appropriate action, as I deeply care about this community and its integrity. I really hope the city will do the right thing and reinstate me with an apology and the blame violations of state and city policy. Thank you for the dozens of city employees that have reached out, directors, supervisors, and staff with their concerns and support for my termination. Thank you very much.
Any other public comments?
Hello, my nizm is polished like that, but I just got back from work. Alvaro Dominguez, I was just wanting to get more insight on what people like me that aren't a company, because that's what I've come to, how would someone go about getting anything zoned for any projects that they want to get done on capitalizing on the assets that they do own? I've ran into multiple problems trying to get things off the ground, calling the City Hall for guidance. I was just led to different departments, and I ended up getting guided to get, buy blueprints, you know, all sorts of stuff, money down the drain, according to them, when I wasn't given no insight about what was required for these type of zoning permits. And every time I called to an inspector, or I need to talk to an inspector, they don't know either themselves. So, I mean, it's just frustrating, because they tell me that they've talked with companies, I'm not a company, they talk to someone that's specialized, and, I mean, I don't, I can't read the zoning stuff. I've tried to, I don't understand it. I call for help, and I've never, you know, been helped as far as that, as far as that's concerned. I just want to step, kind of put on the agenda, I guess, next time, to talk about what we can do as far as, like, regular people to get guided in the right direction, because, I mean, I've done a lot to get things off the ground with the project I kind of have going on right now, and I got nowhere. I mean, just this, just that, I didn't know y'all, this is my first time coming to these, one of these meetings, and I'm just trying to get more insight on how to kind of get a step-by-step as far as what we got to do to get our, what we plan for off the ground, you know, basically, type deal. So, that's really all I got. I didn't know I was going to get a response from any of this, but just that.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? I will go on to item E1, approved minutes, it's the consent agenda, approved minutes of the January 23rd, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting, review the expenditure report for January 2025 and February 2025, review the 2023-2024 second, third, and fourth quarterly investment reports, review the 2024-25 first quarter investment report, review the lobbying report for 2025, January 2025, review the Pecos Housing Finance Corporation update report, and approve Resolution 25-02-01R, a resolution approving the submission of a grant application for the emergency operations crime scene unit number 5431201, which is goal for safety and secure city. Is there anyone here for the HSC?
There is none.
Did we put that back on, maybe then as the actual agenda?
Absolutely. Well, every meeting, the next meeting, if they can come to, I've had the conversation with them, will be our April, or March 13th.
The best will be good.
Yeah, that's the issue.
So I do have some questions on it, I don't know if anybody else does or not, but...
Or the different financing.
My understanding, and again, I'm trying to explain myself on this, I think those are causing, to the meeting that they had, board meeting this week, the financing is, because they enter into a partnership or into a private, public, private use standpoint, so they have a venture cap, or they have, in essence, it's like venture capitalists if we're talking, that's not really what it is, but they have an investor and the HSC that partner on deals. They're not providing the funding, but there is a mechanism where a portion of the earnings are going to be reinvested in the City of Pecos. It is something that, right now, is currently in the legislature, and it may or may not change. But when I was at the board meeting the other day, you see what I, what they, what I'm given by them, I've got a commitment from their, from their attorney that they will provide us that every single month, and they will, their plan is to have approximately 75 of these transactions completed by the end of March, so they're not slowing down. And they're in multiple cities throughout the state.
Is this venture capitalist or this local?
The funding source?
Yeah, the venture capital, is there a lot of different cities, you said?
They're mul, well, no, I'm saying the HSC is doing business in, I think, 14 cities right now across the state.
Does that make their bylaws?
Of the Housing Finance Corporation, yes sir.
Like, they're allowed to be able to do that?
According to state law right now, they're, yes sir. Yeah, they're not, that's the first thing that I went to check, and I had conversations. As a matter of fact, I met with the attorney, Ann Parker, to try to get myself up to speed a little bit, and there is nothing that they are doing that violates state law.
So the Pecos HSC, it's not independent, they're part of, like, some conglomerate or something?
The HSC is a token, but each different development, they partner with whatever developers in that specific development. It's kind of a trade-off, but because the HSC is a father and the landowner, the property, once it's refurbished or built, doesn't pay property tax, and then the savings that they make there, a portion of that goes to the HSC, which gets reinvested in their local whatever they invest in.
So they're not necessarily building the low to moderate housing here?
No, it's not here. They are, they're looking at trying to bring a development here, but the existing agreements, none of them are here.
There's a lot of venture capital money out there.
Yeah, and I maybe, I think instead of venture capital, Randy, I probably should have qualified that and said developer money, because they're partnering with develop, with developers and forming a LLC on each one of their these acquisitions, and so they're forming a new LLC on each one of the acquisitions to manage that specific property.
Well, and then, by the list of properties, they're not building new, they're purchasing existing.
Yeah, for the most part, yes.
But, so the money's coming back to Pecos, how is that money being used?
A portion of it right now is being used to, in some of the grants that have been out there in the community right now. From the board meeting I went to the other day, they're going to be able to put $447,000 of grants to help people refurbish elderly, elderly and handicapped refurbisher, that's right down. And they've done, I think, 25 of them right now, and there's a plan to do another 15 at this point.
There's two right there on Lincoln, and they, they work on, they've done a grant, and they've changed out windows, the roof and everything else.
But we do need to get more, so I would like for them to come present to you all in some method, and we may be able to, I'll reach out to the, to the attorney. I know John is the one that couldn't make the meeting until the 13th, but I'll reach out to the attorney to see if he can either be here at this meeting, or be on a phone call and maybe bring some of the people that really, that are the experts in it, that can give all of us an education on how it works.
On these grants, do they have a criteria that you have to meet?
They do, and they're 150% of, I think they said it's 150% of the federal...
140.
140 of the rate that the federal government puts for the poverty level, he said.
And it says 90% of the units are set aside for low and moderate income households?
Yes ma'am.
Where's the other 10% going?
I think it's going to be to where they can, they can do it kind of like, an apartment like Westman, where they can do it for a higher rate, he said, to where they can have a mix inside that apartment complex. And all of these, I think, that they're doing right now are, in reality, apartment complexes. That's what they're working on right now.
And they have to keep a certain percentage of the, for low income, the moderate income, or they do is that.
Used to be a credit for that, Charles, if there's still credit there for tax credit, who gets that?
So, not necessarily tax credit, it's just that, whatever entity it's in, that property is exempt from property taxes, so...
No, but the IRS has a, had a tax credit for low and moderate income. I don't know that, Randy, I do not know how the agreements are drawn up. I haven't looked at the agreements, as they go with that, on the individual voices.
What is the criteria on the grant menu that is available here locally? I mean, who does the work? I mean, are they qualified contractors or whatever is needed?
They, they allocate a, an amount of money, and normally it's been, most of the, most of the stuff that's been done here in town have been by local contractors here in town. I know that, what they told me, ZTEC has done a few of them, I know that there's been some rules that were done by a group, there's been a lot of stuff here in town.
Not required to be eating or anything like that?
No, they don't have to follow that rules as, because the Housing Finance Corporation is a, is a nonprofit organization, and so they aren't going to have to follow some of the same instructions that we do.
They've already made some money on these other projects out of town, so when did they get started? I guess I wouldn't wear a bit.
Well, we, we approved the reinitiation, initiation of the Housing Finance Corporation back in October. They brought it before council, and it was approved and reopened. So they've...
And it's approved to the board?
Yeah, and so that happened, yeah, that, yes, and that happened in, in October of 2024, and between October of 2024 and now, they, and really, by the end of March, they will, their, their goal is to close 75 of these deals across the state. So they're extremely, they're being extremely fast at what they're doing, and there's several other EFCs, housing finance corporations in the state that are doing the same thing right now.
They're not taking part, not remodeling or...
No, sir, no, sir, that's done by a qualified contractor. They're only, they're only distributing the money to pay for the, for the rehabilitation. It's not really a renovation, because they're not doing that. It's just fixing it to make sure what...
Putting in ramps, correct?
Yes.
Windows that are leaking back?
That's correct, yes ma'am.
Giving ramps, things like that.
Yes ma'am.
I have a question. May I make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll second. I have a motion from Councilman Arona, a second from Councilwoman Seals, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Let the record show, the motion carries. Go to our non-consent agenda, item F1, discuss noise complaints from community members. Goal two, safe and secure city. Valerie Trujillo.
Um, oh yeah. Hi, this is Flores. Um, pretty mean, I wanted to bring this item up on the agenda, because we had previously had a citizen bring up some concerns due to noise complaints due to a local establishment after hours, so we weren't able to publicly respond to her questioning during that time, so I wanted to put it back on the agenda so that we could hear from her and see what we can do to resolve this issue. Ms. Flores?
Can I speak here? I need to get a... Either face you all, or...
You're pressing it, so yeah.
My name is Olga Flores, I live two blocks from here, and I have been losing sleep physically because of this local bar here, cut a corner from us, and I know they have their rights, I understand that, they have their certain sound noise levels that they're allowed by the State of Texas and the City of Pecos, and they have been very courteous when we ask them to please lower the noise, 10:30, 12:30, 1:00 AM, 2:00 AM. Sometimes they are, they're very courteous, they will lower the volume, they, they lowered the volume on the, on the vocals, the people singing, whatever, the DJ, they've lowered the noise on the instruments, that was awesome, thank you, thank you, for Ms. Lisa Tarango and Mr. City Manager Leno, they were very helpful, instrumental in getting it done for us, but it persists. It's like a one-time thing, they'll lower it for a little while, a week or two, maybe a day or so, and then up again, it goes with a vengeance. So, I came to City Hall asking for advice, I did get some, thank you very much, but I was advised that I need to go talk to the neighbors about it, so I did, to no avail, no avail whatsoever. So what's the next step? You know, put it on the agenda. So I come to the City Council, I know that you all have the authority, not the city manager, not the chief of police, but you all, they are under your authority, so we come to you, my neighbors that are here today, because it's, it's above ridiculous. Last Saturday, they were not only beating it out fast and loud, but they, they started yelling and screaming, it didn't even sound like singing, it was just somebody yelling and screaming, maybe trying to pump up the crowd, I don't know. A lot of us kind of maybe feel guilty, oh, I used to do that, I was there, well, you know what, we've been there, done that, got the T-shirt, but now, you know what, now we're, we're all for a good night's rest, you know, that's all we ask. Seven nights, seven nights a week, good night's rest. Somebody told me, well, you can get five days and sacrifice two nights, why? Are they going to share their profits with us? You know, we're not asking for it, we're just, we don't want their money, we don't want their business, we don't want to shut them down, we just want a good night's rest, that's all. And as we all know, that a good night's rest means everything, it affects us physically, mentally. Some of us drive Sunday mornings, drive out of town, church services, you know what, it's not good to be driving out there with five or six hours of sleep. Thank God that nothing has happened so far, but I've heard other people come to me and tell me that there's other noise issues in town, and if they're here, I'm sure they'll bring it up, but for me, it's this bar here, and like I said, we have no beef against them. They want to make money, let them make money, but not off the backs, not off our backs. And I did a little research, and it comes up that it's, it's a, it's not so much the decibel, the noise levels, whatever, it's more disturbing the peace, you know? And then that comes down to a disorderly conduct, which if a person does that, if your neighbor does that to you and doesn't let you sleep, or pumps out music with FUs and all that, and you've got kids in the house, you know, that's a charge right there, but it also applies to businesses, because they're invading our homes, and they don't, they, they have no legality to invade our homes with that noise, with anything. So I come to you as a resolution, I don't know what else to do. I guess, like I said, we don't mean them harm, we don't want to shut them down, let them go, but then let us have our, you know, what's rightfully ours too, that's all, thank you, appreciate you.
Ms. Flores, I do have a question.
Yes ma'am.
You're experiencing problems just on the weekends, or is it pretty much every day?
It used to be, at first, it used to be Fridays and Saturdays, and now they told me that they got permission for Thursday nights also. Some of us have to get up early Thursdays, you know? I have little part-time jobs here and there, which do require me something to get up early, but I'm retired, so, but then my son too, he has to get up early a lot of times, other people also. I have neighbors that have school kids that go to school Friday mornings, and they, they are hearing that, they're having that disturbance in their bedrooms. So it's like, you know, we don't know what to do, we're at a loss, but that's why we're here. Could you help us out, please? Thank you.
What is the acceptable level they would allow for decibels?
Eighty-five for, anything, above eighty-five is presumed unreasonable, and that's where you just misorder the...
Okay, but that, that, the decibel levels, three of us around here have two-story houses, our bedrooms are upstairs, and it, that, that bass, it's, it comes down to the bass guitar, bass drum, I don't know what it is, bass guitar, I'm being told, and it reverberates on those upstairs bedrooms, the, the windows rattle, and the downstairs people, not so much, but upstairs, it, 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 right, I'm sorry, it just reverberates, it rattles, and yeah, maybe it is, I've had policemen go out there with a meter, and they check, and it's like 58% or 56 or whatever, but, and they're out there on my sidewalk, and they show me, they're within their decibel levels, yes, but the effect, the effect is something else, so that's why I'm saying, it has not so much to do with the 85% as it is the, the consequence of that, of that bass guitar, or whatever it is they're yelling out. So it's, I don't know, what, what would you call it? Where does it go? You know, where do we go to? Where do we go to?
Truthfully, I know I don't have an answer right now. I don't know if anyone else here on council does.
I can say something.
Okay.
Ms. Forrest, we have listened, you know, we've listened to complaints and I can tell you that, and this week's been crazy, so I can't tell you that it was yesterday, it wasn't the mystery of the day before. Several of us having, meeting in the business and we let him know, right now he's, as you said, he's not outside of the levels that he'd be there. But what we as a city asked him to do, administration, we've asked him, he could find a way. He and I had the conversation, he's wanting to put some sound absorption walls on the south side of the building that he's supposed to be working, start working on relatively soon to see if that mitigates the problem. He's not obligated to do it, but he said he would because I asked, we asked him, me and the staff asked him to. So we are hearing, I don't want to tell you that it's going to totally take care of it because I honestly do not know, but I think he's going to accommodate to try to be a good business partner in the town. And he says he's going to install sound absorbing panels on that south wall.
Okay, well, I'm west and it's that empty lot where the Methodist church used to be?
Yes, ma'am.
So it just goes straight through. There's no padding, there's no buildings, there's nothing there to absorb any sound. And I did, if I understood it correctly, that the city does have the ability to change that 85% decibel. That's a Texas thing, but the city does have, individual cities do have the authority to change it from what I understood.
So the 85 decibels, definitely the pinocuts and that, we can't change that, but that 85 decibels is just where the presumption that it's unreasonable begins. It doesn't mean that less than that is automatically reasonable. And we also already have a Morgan Times book that prohibits unreasonable noises between the eleven and seven, so it could just be, we need to put it up to enforcement, we'll make it an emphasis, but reasonable is a hard word to define, so.
And I've invited many of the officers and in fact, one did take me up on it and he went upstairs. Wouldn't you know it, the minute he was upstairs, there was no sign.
They were watching.
Yeah. It was like, this is my land, you know, there's no way to hear it, of course. But yes, it was kind of like-
And I do feel for you, Olga, because, I mean, the residents there were there long before that business went in. And, you know, it's not fair for you to be interrupted when you were there first, you and all your neighbors. And, you know, they are in a zone that's zoned for that. I mean, their location is zoned for doing what they're doing, but they do bump right up against that residential area that was there before they came. And, you know, it's, I would like to think there could be a good resolution in the business owner doing the soundproofing to help minimize what the businesses they're doing and the hours that they're doing it so that all of y'all can live peacefully in harmony. Because I know if I was living next door to it, I probably wouldn't be appreciative of it either. So I can certainly feel for you with your concerns and your neighbors as well.
Was it, is the only measurement is the decimal? You know, like I hear a car going down Texas, you know, I can't hear the music inside the car, but I can hear the bass. So is there something that measures that?
Decibels is just how the sound is measured to get to where it's presumed at. Anything below that, whether it's unreasonable, is going to be a potential issue.
Is there another method of measurement though?
Of measuring sound?
Pick up the bass or the lower sounds.
I'm not going to say there's not, but I'm not familiar with it.
Well, but if we, if we let the owner do his sound barrier and see how it works and then maybe, you know, if the ordinance is supposed to be from, I mean, they're supposed to decrease their sound after 11 o'clock, anything after that, then it needs to be called in.
And the officers are very nice, but I've heard some tell me, Ms., don't call us. We can't do anything about it, the 85 decibels. And I see they're correct about that, but again, goes back to disturbing the peace. You know, what right do I have to not let you sleep at night?
It's a very gray area because we understand that it is, it's, you can hear it in your home, you can feel it, but legally it says it's got that threshold on it and that it's, we're trying to come to a compromise on, they're wanting to find a solution to try to help the neighbors, right? How much is it going to help? I don't know. We don't know until-
Yeah, until the UCD and we won't-
Right, until he attempts to do that. We're just trying to hear from your side and Mr. Leno, like he stated, has reached out to the owner as well to see what, they understand your concern and like Lynetta, Councilwoman Seals said, we feel for you. We do. It's, I get it, you know? I have some neighbors that love to turn up the music at, seems like midnight and I feel that bass and it's-
And I've been asked, well, why is this just a recent disturbance? You've been there, I've been there since 1974. What's the difference? I could not answer that very well because I don't know what the difference was. Then my son, one of my sons was here over the holidays and he went over there and he said, you know what, Mom? He says, they have an awesome system. They have upgraded their sound system. Oh, see, he's a musician. Who knows about musicians?
And also in the tour, which was a trailway bus station?
It was a trailway, 80%. Thank you. Maybe it can be a trailway thing.
The brakes.
Between those two, the gas station and the trailway bus station, how did it get zoned for music and restaurant?
Yeah, for an outdoor.
It's zone commercial. Commercial includes restaurants and includes that type of stuff. So it's, I mean, the zoning's not going to be specific as to the type of business, but it's going to be a group of businesses or a-
If that is happening, let's say in my house and I want to jam a night, just get out of my old soundproofing speaker if it's on, it's military, I love it, can get rid of them, I don't know why they're in the end. But, you know, if I put them out, like when I lived in another place and stopped it, I would put them outside of Blair and my neighbors would come and join, but I lived in a blank room. So, you know, we shut it off at about 10:30, 11:05, you know, lower it down towards just us, you know, here. You know, if it was in the neighborhood, I know the police officer would come and give me a ticket or citation for disturbing the peace. You know, yes, the business is in a commercial zone, area, but-
Around the edge.
Around the edge, but you're surrounded by residents. So maybe if this doesn't help with the sound barrier dampening sound effect, maybe we need to look at it more, you know?
And I would ask you, Mr. Leno, if you would, also maybe, maybe he can do it also on the west side.
I will ask that. I will ask that absolutely. I will ask for that consideration also.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And I don't know, maybe a timeframe?
A time? Yes, thank you.
You know, maybe he doesn't have the finances today, but he needs to know, he needs to be gearing up maybe by a certain time or this will get revisited back on council.
Yeah, we can have that, but the difficulty that we do is we can't make him do it. He's doing it because we asked him to and he's going to be doing it with his own funds. There's not going to be any help. So he said he would do it as expeditions as possible and we will stay on top of it. But I don't want to guarantee you or tell him that he has to have it done by the end of February because it probably will not happen and I don't want to make promises to you, Ms. Forrest, that I can't keep. So I will do everything that I can to get this taken care of as soon as I can. That I can promise you and I will keep you updated. If you want to reach out to us, I would be more than happy to give you an update. Yes, ma'am.
It's kind of like living next door to the people that own the chickens with the roosters that crowze at private, every morning.
Charles, did you ask if they would give her a free meal?
They could do that and they probably would tell me yes.
They probably would.
And they would probably turn the music louder because you accept their-
No, but we will continue to work, Ms. Forrest. I can promise you that.
Thank you.
So we hear you, I mean-
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And for future references, if we're gonna, as a town continues to grow, we might run into that again, so for future references, you know, we need to look at the ordinance and do those kinds of requirements that they need some barriers and all that, if they're going to be close to, you know, to a residential area. Because there's another, another place like that and that's over there at the park, that's the same, same nation, so, but that'd be something to look at, at future progress and that we do.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will go to item F2, discuss new possible downtown parking development. Goal one, sustainable economic development. John Parent, the CBB Mayor.
Good evening, John Parent. I'm here representing the CBB and Chamber of Commerce. Kind of a disclaimer, this is not a perfect idea, but it's supposed to spark conversation between not only the city and EDC, Chamber, CBB, the museum. It's, it's something that can benefit everybody. So if, the first page that I provided is really busy, but it is a picture of the downtown area, Oak Street from 285. So basically, at the very top in front of the museum, what we're trying to do is create kind of a safer environment off of what has happened in the last couple of months. A lot of the business owners complain about 18-wheelers driving through there, trying to avoid the light at 5:00. This creates a lot of unwanted traffic in front of the museum. So the two green squares, I guess you could say, is in between each one of those crosswalks and it's essentially sealing off, not allowing for through traffic anymore and extending the museum out. This was my idea. Another idea from talking with Joe Keese from the Chamber of Commerce is almost taking First Street off of 285 and barricading it there to not allow the through traffic and creating more of a downtown area where everybody can park and walk and not have to worry about speeding trucks coming through there at unsafe speeds. If you go to the left, it's almost at the top of the page in the middle, there's a red dot. We had our Pecos bill that was on display in that courtyard right in front of the depot. It would be really nice to move that in to the middle of the street to kind of create almost like a cul-de-sac. If you're going north looking for parking and you don't find anything, go around our Pecos bill and head back south. It's almost, because there's no through traffic anymore to the right or to the east. So creating something to keep you in downtown, having something there, some people ask for a fountain, some people ask for the Pecos bill, something, even in the Christmas time, having the Christmas tree be on display right in the middle of Oak Street would be a really nice thing. So the first proposed addition to parking is in front of the museum. The second is just north of the last building on the west side, which is owned by the museum, which is pretty much used for storage. I don't want to say that everything in there is just storage, but I don't think that we have enough room to put those things on display at this time. So just by working downtown the last couple of months, I've known that there's not a whole lot of parking that goes on there and that could essentially be used if it was reconfigured, parking for the museum when things are going on. I talked to Sarah, she let me know that the one west of that, the larger one behind, the Red Bluff office is already in the works. It's something that the city has proposed and has been thinking about for a while. So that was nice to know that I'm not that far off from everybody else. In between the two buildings, I believe it's the Bumblebee or All-American Bar and Grill, there is actually a space of a walkway that you can get from the proposed western portion through into the downtown area.
Think of the letter in the line barrier.
Yes, ma'am. That's probably more accurate than what I just said, so. So I did talk with Mr. Oglesby as well, kind of representing the museum in some aspect. He agreed that that area was, that followed what he was looking at as well. So we're not, we're not too far off from what I think everybody wants and that's just more spaces so that we can promote our downtown area, so that we can support our businesses If you keep coming south, that's right outside this building and after I made this, I found out that there's already plans for that lot, which is fine. Again, this is to spark conversation so that everybody can get on the same page and work to something bigger and better downtown. And then the last, at the very bottom, is this property out here, as it's referred to many times as Oglesby Park. The EDC and, there's a joint, EDC and Kevin Duke own that property. They've been working, trying to figure out a way to provide parking. I thought this would be a perfect place for the residents downtown to maybe purchase a parking spot. That's something that's, has been brought up many times about city ordinances. I'm not here to tell you what is written in the city ordinance. I know what I've been told by other people and businesses around, so we're just trying to give a solution to a potential problem rather than tell you what to do or say how to do it. The next page is just more of the same stuff, more blown up. As you can see, the green part on the second page is more of that courtyard area to where you would take out the sidewalk or leave the sidewalk, whatever you want to do, but create more of a courtyard area to where you could walk from the museum into the, into the Hall of Fame. And again, the, the rest of the proposed spots are also highlighted. Third page, same thing, just zoomed in, I guess you could say. And then the, the fourth page is a highlighted area that, working with Mr. Dutch over at the EDC, when I went in to show him my proposition for you today, he earmarked this area, which is owned by Union Pacific. It is .74 acres, which would constitute almost another 122 parking spaces. Right now, it is used, how to put this in a nice way? It's used for storage for Union Pacific. It could be really cleaned up. It's, with all this area that we want to develop and get bigger and better, having that just cleaned up would be nice, but it's also another 122 parking spots. The proposed that I initially told you guys about is about 144 parking spots. In my, in my estimation, they're in between First and Second and Second and Third. So in between First and Third Street on both sides of Oak, it's approximately 100 parking spaces, depending on the width, but approximately. So with this, we not only create double the amount of parking spots, but we also double the amount of sales tax that we can have downtown. It doubles the businesses. So the last page, I had many questions about this and thank you to my, my friend Rogelio Alvarado pulled up this. It's book five, page 16. Everybody was wondering, well, who owns First Street? A lot of people told me, oh, you can't do any of that. The railroad company owns First Street. Well, this is the far right, the last street there that goes north and south is Oak Street and there is a 100-foot setback from the train tracks and that takes you right up to the edge of the sidewalk for the depot, which means the 50-foot right away is all owned by the city, which means you guys can do whatever you please. I talk really fast and I give a lot of information, but if you have any questions-
Are you accounting for ADA parking?
ADA parking? No, sir. This is just, to be honest with you- This is just, to be honest with you, what I did was, we did this on Google Earth, we went to the RCDC, and we took snippets and used the same scale and drug things from one side to the other. Again, I'm not an engineer, I just, you guys are gonna build it way better than I ever could, I just. Yes, sir. No, absolutely. That's, I understand that, and that, that's why I'm saying I'm, I'm not here to enforce anything downtown, I. I, I understand.
But it would be parking for museum, library, whatever's allowed.
Businesses.
Yeah, businesses allowed. I really like the idea of closing it off to prevent. Right here, and I, I think that's good and it helps, um, well, it would help close through traffic.
Absolutely.
Because it's really not a straight street, I mean, it's platted, but it's not.
And, look, I, I tried to work with as many people as I could and got as many inputs as I could, so that it's not just one person's idea, it's try, I'm trying to collaborate everybody together, 'cause every, uh, everybody has resources that each one of us needs. I, I know that, uh, that, you know, working with, uh, Mr. Dutch over, I know that they've been trying to get grants downtown. Uh, Mr. Vieskis is very, uh, very helpful when it comes to that, and so maybe you guys meeting with them and trying to figure out if any of the funds that they're going after, if you can add to it in any way. If the Chamber can do anything to help you guys get numbers for sales tax, so that you know what you're investing in, that you can get your money back, let us know. We want to, we want this to be done, because we have a lot of plans for downtown, and when people are walking long, 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 uh, ways to get to something, they're, they're turned off by it. Um, this, this, everybody says, well, in San Antonio, well, this isn't San Antonio. I mean, for the longest time, we had people parking in their front yards, you know? So.
Because they don't want to walk.
Exactly. So I, I just wanna create a, a friendly place downtown, a well-lit place that everybody feels safe, um, and I, and I certainly don't wanna exclude anybody, so.
Also, in like, in front of the museum, I've, I've been there, um, I've seen where, uh, for everybody, for the handicapped people, they say, park, in between parks.
Absolutely. And I, and honestly, Joe, Mr. Keese had, I think, the best idea, even closing it off from First, it allows everybody all the time that they need to go from that parking lot into the museum. And they could park anywhere downtown and still have that luxury of taking their time and not having to worry about getting run over by a truck. So.
And I'm not, and I'm not saying no on the parking lot.
That is still owned by a private entity. Um, I know that Mr. Keese is trying to work with them to see if it's available, um, but other than that, I, I don't really have any information, Mr. Graham.
But it is used for fueling.
It still is used for fueling.
It is, right here, right here, just, uh, where the, our trucks come in and that fuel thing.
So they, they still come off of two eighty-five, there's, it's, it's very faint, but you can see, uh, just south of the EDC entrance, you can see where the curbs broke. Most people come, or most trucks come in through there, um, but it's, it's someone's business. I, as much as we would want that, that's somebody's, somebody's, uh, somebody's meal ticket there, so it's really hard for me, uh, at the Chamber of Commerce, especially if they're one of our people, to even propose it. I'm here for everybody, Mr. Graham, that's what I'm here for.
You know, and they talked at one time, a couple years ago, on, uh, Oak Street here, it's so wide, you know, parking, uh, a row of cars in the middle, sitting at the.
Do you not remember that whole reverse parking?
So, so. So I'm glad you brought that up, because that's why the, no, 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 just, hey, the dotted line, the dotted line, I talked to, um, I talked to some people from the governor's office with the travel and tourism, and we were talking about this, uh, downtown area, and I said, you know, in Austin, they have rickshaws that take you from one side to the other, you have horses and carriages. Like, why not have a golf cart or something that would take people from one side of the street to the other, Thursdays, Fridays, Saturday nights? You allow the businesses to hire someone to do this, you let them pay for it, they're, they're bringing people to their business. Um, it's something you could do as a fundraiser, it's something that you could do in two hundred different ways, purchasing a golf cart, light it up really nice, drive it back and forth so that people can get from one side to the other safely. How that's done, I don't know, is there, is there a lane for it, is this, a lot smarter people will figure it out. These are just ideas. Absolutely.
We all know that we need downtown parking.
Absolutely. I just, we've gone, Joe and I have been up and down that street listening to businesses, and it, it really is our, our obligation to, to bring their concerns to you, that's what, that's why they're members, and that's what we'll continue to do. We don't wanna carry this, we don't wanna own it, we just wanna give ideas so that, we're, we're their voice, and we did go to.
It sounds that we need parking here.
Absolutely.
We have a lot of people come to see it.
Absolutely.
Today, for example, there was.
No.
No parking, which is good, but, yeah, I, we get, and it's a big name business downtown also, so it is, it's, it's in our debt.
Thank. I, I was told that by three different people, so he'll kill me for that, but that's all right. Uh, I'm sure there's a hundred questions, I'm always available, please let us know, um, what we can do to help. If you need a survey or you need something, rely on us, we'll get it for you, so.
We have a lot of those, um, what are the, the names of those little vehicles that are allowed now? We see a lot of those lit up really nicely, maybe that would be a good option. I like that idea. Taxes.
Thank you.
Come downtown on a Saturday night, come downtown on a Saturday night, it is packed.
It is, yeah.
But the worst part about it is, is talking to the businesses, downtown is packed, but the businesses aren't. And so that's, that's what we're trying to help, that's what we're trying to create. But we can't do it alone, you guys can't do it alone. It, it, it's gonna take effort from everybody to.
That's a very good point, to, to say that, because if you drive by and you see there is no parking, it is a deterrent. Because you think, oh, there's not gonna be a, there's not gonna be any room, because, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and skip to item F ten, update from EMC Strategy Group on lobbying efforts and legislative items that are important to the city in both Austin and Washington DC. This is goal six, sound governments and physical management, Charles Lino.
Mayor and Council, Charles Lino, City Manager. I'm just gonna introduce, uh, all of you all have met, you all, we engaged Ernie Gonzalez and his group, EMC Strategy Group, uh, at a meeting a few, uh, well, about a month ago, uh, and he has some updates, we did provide that update, but he also has other updates, so I'm gonna invite him up to come take care of this one. Thank you. Thank you, Ernie.
Thank you, Charles. Good evening, Mayor and the members of City Council, and I thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here. I also wanna introduce, uh, the E in EMC is right here, Ernie Fabiun Salas, he's a state and federal lobbyist, uh, really proud of him, at twenty-six years old, Eagle Scout, uh, and, uh, former football player, and, uh, he finally got into the business, uh, he didn't wanna do it, but now, now he's doing it. But, uh, he comes with me to DC and Austin all the time, and, uh, so, um, my commitment that I made at the last City Council meeting is that I would bring other members of my team, uh, you will meet my boss, uh, next time, Janice Gonzalez, uh, she will be here, and then, uh, we'll bring up Mitchell, uh, the M in EMC, and, uh, so, excited to be here. Uh, over the last few days, I've met with, uh, your, uh, EDC Director, um, for the Pecos EDC, Jimmy Dutchover on Tuesday, and then yesterday I had a roundabout of meetings, um, had an opportunity to attend the, the two-by-six meeting, I was very impressed with that, the mayor was there along with the county judge and the other representatives, uh, from the other, uh, agencies that are local taxing entities, and I wanna say, I was very impressed with the level of co-operation that I'm seeing among the taxing entities in this area. We represent, um, about a dozen communities in, in six different counties, and none of them do exactly what you're doing here, so you guys are definitely leading the way in terms of leadership in the state of Texas. Also had an opportunity to visit with, uh, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Trujillo, uh, Councilman Orona, and then Councilman, uh, Saldana, uh, over breakfast and then lunch, and tomorrow I'm gonna, and yesterday I visited with, uh, um, Councilwoman Seals, and then tomorrow I'm having, uh, breakfast with, uh, with Randy. Um, the idea is, I wanna maintain a dialogue, and it, it is an investment that I've gotta make, I did mention in several of my meetings that, you know, sometimes I've gotta, most times I gotta be in either Austin or Washington DC, but I do wanna make my visits here once a month, so that I can engage with you, uh, hear what the, the, the needs are, and then I could take those needs to Austin to visit with our legislators, as I'm doing my job on, on your behalf, and also in Washington DC. Uh, we've been quite busy, uh, since we took the job. If you didn't know, before we actually had a contract with the city, uh, thanks to Jimmy Dutchover and then my communication with Charles, uh, we, uh, we represented the city during the presidential inauguration in Washington DC, uh, Charles was there, I was here, and so was the judge and his family. Uh, it was quite cold, uh, but I will tell you that the city was represented well. Uh, we also had a lot of discussions with, uh, State Representative Eddie Morales, and also State Senator, uh, Cesar Blanco. In fact, last week, or on January the fourteenth, uh, my entire team was at the opening day of the legislative session, uh, and then, uh, the following week, we, we did a roundabout and distributed snacks and refreshments to all the staffs of the members that we work with. Uh, last week, uh, Ernie Fabu and I had, uh, dinner with, uh, State Representative Morales and his wife Helen, and his Chief of Staff Kayden, uh, and then on Monday, we had lunch with Senator, uh, Blanco, uh, and his staff, and we talked about the priorities that have been shared with me. Uh, over the last few weeks, I've received a, uh, a one-pager that had the list of the legislative priorities that had been identified by the city, the county, the EDC, the school district, and, and other groups. Um, the mayor, uh, City Manager and Griffin shared those with me, uh, we look at, we studied those with our team, and then we shared some of those with your state rep and your state senator already. Uh, we've had a little traction, by the way, on the, uh, the relief route, uh, excited to, to see that we've got a ball rolling. We, we asked the senator to get directly involved, and also our state rep, uh, Senator Blanco reached out to Tech Dot, put a little encouragement, uh, you know, with his, uh, with his political muscle, uh, they've offered, uh, a couple solutions, and so we're beginning to discuss with, how that would work out, but I will tell you that the discussions are taking place between your state legislator and the Tech Dot senior leadership, and we're in direct, uh, dialogue with, uh, the city manager, and also the EDC Director and the county judge, so that, that's a very promising thing. I also wanna announce, just that within the last two hours, um, your state representative was appointed as the Vice Chairman of the House Committee on Energy for the state of Texas, which is a huge, huge deal. He was also, uh, um, made a member of the Transportation Committee, which is even great, 'cause the Transportation Committee, they recommend their budget to the Texas Transportation Commission, uh, and then it becomes, uh, funding for the Texas Department of, of Transportation. So that, that's a very good thing. Um, so, the other things that we've been doing is we've been planning the Austin Days, uh, that will take place on March fifth and sixth, coordinating again with the Senator's office and the State Rep's office. On that day, I'm excited that we've got a very healthy delegation of representatives from the city going, and also the county and the EDC, uh, so my entire team will be there to support that. Uh, that, those two days will include a reception, uh, with our state senator and representative, and also a series of meetings that we're gonna have, uh, at the House and the Senate. Uh, the delegation will get recognized in the House Chamber, uh, and also in the Senate Chamber, and I've been told, uh, just a few, uh, just about an hour ago, I was on the phone with, um, uh, Eddie Morales and his team, and, uh, they let me know that they are gonna work to get at least four members of the delegation to stand right next to the Speaker of the House to be recognized on the House floor. Uh, so, uh, you know, it's ceremonial, but it's a way to get the city's, uh, name and the county's name out there, uh, so as we do our work on behalf of you all, and, and the constituents that you serve, um, the representatives that we visit with that are chairs of relevant committees on relevant, uh, uh, priorities for the city, it helps us do our job a little bit more effectively. Uh, so that'll be on March fifth and the sixth. Uh, the following week, on March, uh, ninth through the thirteenth, we will have our Washington DC Days. Uh, my team has been working very aggressively with Congressman Tony Goncalas, and also with the Office of Senator Ted Cruz and John Cornyn, to schedule a series of meetings that will include a few federal agencies, again tied to the local priorities, and then, uh, not only meeting with our Texas delegation, but also meeting with chairs and vice chairs of key committees like homeland security, uh, also rural development, economic development, transportation, um, so we will visit with, uh, a lot of members, uh, both the United States House of Representatives and the Senate. It will be very busy, uh, but it should be a very productive, uh, meeting. And a lot of the work, uh, in my visits with the members of the City Council that we've had over the last couple of days, I did mention, and also I met with the staff this morning, that a lot of the work takes place in between those type of visits. So we will go there and put a name to the city, and the elected officials in Washington DC and Austin, they need to hear from other elected officials. They need to hear from you all, because you all carry a lot of votes, too, and so whenever you all talk, they listen. My job as a lobbyist is to, to follow up with those conversations, and, and to also begin those conversations before we even get there, so that they know what we're gonna talk about, so there's, no, nobody's getting blindsided, and, and it's an effective meeting. So, uh, I'm excited about the city supporting both, uh, trips to Austin and Washington DC. Uh, I've been in regular contact with your city manager, uh, just about daily. Uh, we communicate, if, if not over the phone, via email or text, uh, the staff has been very supportive, uh, in fact, Griffin, uh, behind me, uh, he's been very supportive, uh, making sure that, you know, we coordinate communication and get a follow-up. So I, I'm excited to, to be here, I'm excited to represent you, and again, my commitment is to visit with you on a monthly basis, if I'm not here, then Janice will be here, or, or the other members of my team. Uh, this time I'd like to open up the floor to any questions that you may have.
I guess the session's already started, do, do we have some goals that were, concrete goals that we're trying to get across while this session's open?
Well, I, I've been given, uh, a list of predetermined legislative, um, priorities that includes areas of economic development, uh, areas of maintaining local control, 'cause Austin and DC, they have a history of providing unfunded mandates to cities and counties and school districts. We wanna make sure that you all maintain that local control. Uh, the, um, the session will be spirited, the, the governor has already put out his agenda, uh, some of it, uh, won't be supported by even members of his own party, uh, because it, it takes away from local control, it has to do with taxes, and your ability to fund projects that are important for infrastructure. So in the parties, I've been shared is, uh, to, um, seek greater resources for transportation and infrastructure, seek greater resources for public safety and homeland security, and then also supporting economic development, and also supporting transportation that is, is very, the, very dependent on not only safety, vehicular safety and pedestrian safety, uh, but also to support the energy industry in the region and in your county and your city. So I have been given a, a series of legislative parties, and I look forward to our continued discussion, Randy will visit tomorrow, and, um, you know, one of the things that we're looking at in Washington DC is, um, seeking support for homeland security resources like the detention facility that the county owns, or we know that, uh, thanks to you informing me, that I didn't know that Pecos had a Border Patrol station in the past, and I know that this new administration has put in a lot of resources, a lot of money into Border Patrol and homeland security, so, you know, if Pecos can benefit from those resources, we're gonna seek them, so. Any other questions? All right, thank you all very much, appreciate you, thank you.
This time we'll go to item F three, discuss consider Resolution twenty-five dash O two dash O two R, a resolution approving the purchase of in-car and body camera. the purchase of in-car and body camera hardware and software from Motorola Solutions in the amount of $413,923 for the Pecos Police Department. This is under Strategic Goal 2, Safety and Security City, Lisa Torango.
Lisa Torango, Chief of Police, Mayor, Council. Thank you for hearing the request for the resolution. As you can see in your packet, there's two separate quotes. One's going to be for body cams, which are the body cameras the officers wear. We're looking to get 32 of those. The ones we have, the warranties have expired, and it's time to upgrade and update those. The other are for 14 in-car cameras, which are for the 14 new units that are currently in outfitting right now. And those have all been budgeted. You can see in the quotes where we can do this in either a lump sum, or we can pay it out over five years. The quote will also show you the warranties that are available. We do have our representative with Motorola Solutions here, if you have any questions for him as well.
So what is the proposal to do, in one lump sum or pay it out?
Well, we've got it budgeted to do it in a lump sum. Motorola Solutions did bring us the quote that shows either direction, whichever way we want to do it.
The lump sum would be better. It's a paid interest or a long-term contract. What about, what warranty do you want?
Well, the warranty that we've had is obviously for the span of the device, which was a five-year warranty. You know, during that time, you see that technology changes, upgrades and updates start happening. We start experiencing malfunctions or issues with the devices. The IT has been really good to work with this on doing the updates and upgrades when we've needed them. And the warranty is just for all parts and everything, so if it gets ran over by a truck, if we can just get a little piece of it and send it back, they're going to send us a new device.
How often did you use the previous warranty?
Quite often, actually. I'm fortunate. And it could be minor things like the device to hold it on breaks. Since then Motorola has done a lot of upgrades with the product, so even for the ones that we put on our SWAT team, it's got a different type of bracket that's going to hold it on. So the warranty is great to have, because you can see the cost to replace these, so to have a warranty is just, it's invaluable to have it.
Tell us what's your suggestion, lump sum or pay it out?
We had it budgeted, Randy had it on the page. If it wasn't budgeted, I'd say we're going to do it on a subscription base, but we did have it budgeted, so I think the smart method would be to pay it out.
So is the $413,000, is that including the warranty?
Yes, ma'am. And that's the total of the two invoices. Yes, ma'am.
Well, since our PD helps keep all of us safe, I think we need to try and help keep them safe.
I appreciate that.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 25-02-02R, as presented by Chief Torango.
Thank you.
Don't mind. I'll give it to Valerie. It's very important. I have a motion from Councilwoman Seals, a second from Councilwoman Trujillo, to approve Resolution 25-02-02R. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Go to item F4, discuss Consider Resolution 25-02-03R, approving the purchase of a forklift from United Rentals in the amount of $50,750 for the fleet department. This is under Strategic Goal 7, Enhance Pecos' Infrastructure Network. Kelvin Ridgely, Public Works.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Excuse me. Kelvin Ridgely, like she said, Director of Public Works. And in front of you, you have a resolution for a budgeted item to increase the capacity of the forklift that we currently have. The one we have now roughly has a capacity of 8,000 pounds. The one that we're requesting to purchase will give us a capacity of 18,000 pounds. No, this will be new.
Is it new?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you, it looks like it's used.
No, it'll be new. Yes, sir.
Is this through the backboard?
I'm not sure if United Rentals is a part of that.
I'm not sure off the top of my head.
Yeah.
The war bids.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
How many did you get back?
Three. Three is typically what we try to do. The only way we...
Is this the lowest one?
Yes, ma'am.
Not a bad price for that size.
No, not at all, and especially not for that capacity.
Is there a question? Make a motion to approve. Go to item F4.
Have a motion from Councilman Graham, a second from Councilman Saldana, to approve Resolution 25-02-03R as presented. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Go to item F5, discuss Consider Resolution 25-02-04R, a resolution appropriating the amount of $51,000 to Rattletick Utilities to complete the lead and copper inventory and notifications. Goal 7, Enhance Pecos' Infrastructure Network. Kelvin Ridgely, Public Works.
Again, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Kelvin Ridgely, Director of Public Works. What you have in front of you is a resolution to outsource the lead and copper. You know, some time ago, we talked about the EPA and TCEQ mandating us to make sure that we did a lead and copper inventory and notify the residents if that is present in their home. So this is in an effort to make sure that we meet the deadline and actually get this done in a timely fashion, based on the level of manpower that we have.
And this is a budgeted item, right?
No, this is not a budgeted item. No, sir. I would never forget to say that.
No, this would actually come out of the unbalanced and watered servers.
But it's testing. It has to be done.
Absolutely.
We don't, no one has a choice.
That's right.
We'll make the motion. If there's any question, I'll make the motion that we approve. Resolution 25-02-04R.
I'll figure. Have a motion from Councilman Saldana, a second from Councilwoman Seals, to approve Resolution 25-02-04R as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries.
Thank you.
Item F6, discuss Consider Resolution 25-02-05R, a resolution approving the reappointment of Municipal Court Judge Bonnie Dominguez. Goal 2, Safety and Security City, Cato Ramirez, Assistant City Manager.
Mayor and Council, in your packets, you will see Resolution 25-02-05R. This is a resolution to reappoint our current judge, Ms. Bonnie Dominguez, and it'll be for another two-year term.
Okay. The resolution, the tier says 04.
Says 04?
04R instead of 05R.
All right, we'll get that corrected.
And she's agreeable to this?
Yes. She is.
Do we need to modify it? Can we do it for three years?
They're for two years.
Should it secure lockering?
I was forgetting to increase that term.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 25-02-05R, appointing our municipal judge, Bonnie Dominguez, to another two-year term.
Second. Is that two years? Have a motion from Councilwoman Seals, a second from Councilman Orona, to approve Resolution 25-02-05R as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries.
Thank you.
Go to item F7, update on political yard signs inside the city limits. Goal 5, promote open and consistent communication. Holly Giraki, Director of Community Services.
Mayor, Council, Holly Giraki, Director of Community Services. Per your request, we, I sent code officials out in the different areas of town, and we also had the support of one of our county commissioners who was notifying those people that had ran for office to collect their signs as well. We haven't seen any in the vicinities that we have been driving, so, and they hadn't either, so I'm happy to report, I believe, most of those signs have now been collected. New signs will be coming due to the elections coming in May of '25, and we will put out in our coffee clutch a reminder near the end of the running to collect signs after the 10 days.
And I just know sometimes it is difficult to know where all your signs are, because you're not the one that put them there.
Yes.
Someone else did, and so it's sometimes difficult to know where all to go back and pick your signs up from.
Correct.
So sometimes if you see a sign way off someplace, you know, mine, call me, you know, and I'll come get it.
I'll call you. I'll have them call you. You're correct. You know, that's right. I've seen them installed, and they're not normally installed, for the most part, by the candidates, so.
But they're supposed to be picked up 10 days after reelection?
Yes.
I've seen some signs on the air where I live for President Trump, as President Pence.
To give them a call.
No, but, I mean...
Charles will be in Washington.
But it doesn't say vote for whatever, it's just more like, I guess you could call it a political sign, but still, you know, if it goes along.
So if it's not in our right-of-way, yes.
They're more in his yard.
Yes, if they're in their yard, they're welcome to have them. If they're in our right-of-way, we just pick them up. Yeah, unless they're...
Because they're not supposed to be in the right-of-way.
They're not supposed to be in the right-of-way. That's correct.
No, they're well within their yard.
If they're, yeah, and that's just, I think those are obviously citizens supporting their particular person. Expressing their...
Maybe a good visual whenever we put out the information and the specimen coffee clutch, maybe on the social media page of what is actually like considered the right-of-way. I know there's been confusion sometimes, people aren't really aware of what is considered the proper placement.
We definitely, yes.
Maybe a visual would help.
Sure. That's a great idea. Yes, we can.
Thank you.
Anything else?
If you could, you put it on the state street. Is that state highway?
The state highway? I'm sure they do. They regulate, well, I'm sure they do.
It's not our problem.
Pardon?
It's not our problem.
Unless it becomes an eyesore. It's damaged or...
Or a visual hazard.
Or it's over a, or if it's over a walkway. Right.
Sometimes the way they're placed, you can't see.
That's, yes. Yes, they cannot, yes, that's correct. They cannot impede any visual traffic. You're welcome. I'm just going to stay up here.
Item F8, discuss Consider Ordinance 25-02-01 and Ordinance Repealing Ordinance 19-11-03 Forhibiting the Maintaining of Dangerous Buildings Within the City of Pecos. First reading. Goal 3 is Promote the Visual Image of Pecos, Holly Giraki.
Mayor, Council, bringing this ordinance back, repealing our existing ordinance on dangerous structures, this actually speaks directly to our dilapidated structures in the city and how we actually get them moved and processed through our, through our leadership here. So all I've done with this ordinance is I have actually removed the municipal court identifier and brought it back to council for decision. And we did meet with our city, our municipal judge, as well as our city attorney, to verify whether or not we could legally hold these hearings within the municipal courtroom. Come to find out, we can't. So with that said, came back, just removed that wording, updated it, replaced the wording with what was previously there. Holding any hearings and decisions through our council, where council will have the final decisions when it comes to dilapidated properties that are presented.
So exactly how's this going to be enforced?
This is enforced through code enforcement. So the enforcement never changed. It was just the hearing process that actually is being repealed.
So there's a dilapidated building, it's been there for years. What's the process for getting something done about it with the ordinance?
The ordinance identifies the actual steps that the code enforcement official and officer will take to address the dilapidated structure, how it notifies what the state requires as well as what our ordinance states. We will go through that process. Upon completing that process, if the owner is not compliant or in compliance with the ordinance, then we will send a notice for hearing, place it in the paper, and place it on the agenda. At that time, you're going to see the documentation and the pictures of that particular property, and make a determination if it, if we need to move forward and have that home demolished. And that is if owners are not responding to our certified letters. Everything will go out by certified letter.
And we put a lien on the property from the city?
If the city, yes, if the city, we do have budgeted dollars up. Cindy has put budgeted dollars in the current budget. If the city contracts to have these homes taken down, then yes, we would file a lien for the cost to do that.
You said homes, but this is buildings.
So identifiable, any structure. It's not necessarily just a residence. It's a structure that's in a...
Commercial.
I beg your pardon?
When I see building, I think of commercial.
So anything that is actually, a building or a structure, whether it's residential or commercial, I understand what you're saying, though. You're wanting to identify it, so it's identified by its condition. If a commercial building and/or residential building is in a dilapidated, deteriorated state, then it falls within the guidelines of this particular ordinance, and we are able to then act on that.
So if you have an owner that's deceased or one that's out of town, you can't get hold of them, you can go through the process and eventually demo it?
Yeah, we're going to make every effort to make contact with owners of the property. In some cases, there are deceased owners of property that haven't properly...
Probated.
Pardon?
Probated their wills.
They haven't properly probated it, correct. Legally, you know, obviously, we want the owner, it's our push to the owner, commercial or business, to address the structure. That's the goal, is to give them the push to do something about the property. The last thing we want to do is have to tear it down. We would prefer that the owner comes in and addresses it.
So this needs to be a budget?
Not, yes, yes, yes. The goal...
Check with the tax company.
Yes.
It's not going to come on a tax sale anytime soon.
Pardon?
You check with the appraisal district, there's not going to be on the tax, you know, a tax sale anytime soon, too.
So...
Because they have tax sales, but if it's not tended to, usually they don't pay the taxes either.
That's exactly right. Those are parts of the information that's going to actually be provided to you. You're going to actually, some of the information that's going to be provided to council is, is there any back taxes owed? We work directly with Reeves Appraisal District to gather that information, to identify any new owners. We have had it happen where people have bought property that have been actually burned. There was a property that actually burned. These people came in from us, they had no idea, I don't know when they bought it, I just remember having to show them down the road where it used to be. It was no, had nothing to do with the city, obviously, but we do our due diligence to make sure we do everything we can to find the owners. Some of these places are banks, you know, but we do our due diligence to make sure notification is properly given.
But it's going to come to council before y'all do anything?
Correct. The decision ultimately is yours. The decision ultimately is yours. There's a couple of options always given to property owners. They have a ninety day extension that they could come in and sign off on if they want to tear a property down because it is beyond repair or too costly to repair. We will sign off on a ninety day extension for them. We'll sign off on a hundred and eighty day extension for them to permit. They are required to come in and provide a full scope of work that they're going to actually do, and they have to maintain contact with us every thirty days to make sure they're meeting the scope of work that they have agreed to do.
They're progressing on...
Yes, ma'am.
On the situation.
Yeah.
How many y'all think it'll do a year?
Well, they haven't had any done since 2019. So, previous to that was a hundred and forty-four, and I only know that because I was the one that did them all, so. It's the only reason I know it. So, but, you know, as the city grew, those lots that were cleared were sold at a premium. So, those dollars did come back to the owners of those properties, and it did benefit the city as a whole in its beautification efforts.
Gets those properties back on the next roads?
It does. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? In my recommendation, we approve ordinance 25-02-01 as presented by Holly Giraki.
I'll second. Have a motion from Councilman Arona, second from Councilwoman Seals, to approve ordinance 25-02-01R as presented.
First reading.
First reading.
First, oh, yeah, first reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Item F9, discuss, consider ordinance 25-02-02 and ordinance amending chapter fourteen Building and Building Regulations, first reading, article two. Goal three, promote the visual image of Pecos, Holly Giraki.
Mayor Council, all we're doing here, chapter fourteen Building, is we are updating our International Property Maintenance Code to 2021. It currently is adopted at 2015, so we're updating that. And then, we are also updating to the 2021 Energy Code, to what was previously adopted, I believe, again, in 2015.
Do you think we'll go back after the second reading?
And we're currently utilizing both of these, both of these codes right now. We're just, again, we're just aligning it with all of our other current building codes, which are 2021, with the exception of our National Electric Code and our Fire Code.
What are they?
National Electric Code is going to be brought back, it needs to be brought up to 2020. It's currently 2017. And then, the Fire Code, Ms. Syrah met with Jack Brickshire, who's our fire marshal, and he requested to review more of the updates before he updates the, the Fire Code to 20, 2021.
I'll make the motion that we approve, ordinance 25-02-02 as presented.
I'll second. I have a motion from Councilman Saldana, a second from Councilwoman Fratillo, to approve ordinance 25-02-02 as presented. First reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries.
Thank you.
Item F11, update on lighting and striping along Lincoln Street. Goal seven, enhance Pecos' infrastructure network, finesse sales.
I think we've probably all either experienced it or have had someone reach out to us about Lincoln Street, especially at night, being very dark and no striping and kind of drop-offs on the edges. You're the only one on it. You don't mind driving down the middle of the country so much, but even though the car is coming the opposite direction, it can be a little scary sometimes. So, I just, we'd kind of like to know and let the community know what the progress is on maybe getting some lighting or some striping out there.
So, we are, I am attempting to locate another striper. We did have some lined up to stripe several streets. That person fell through. We were ultimately able to get Eddie Street done, but the goal was to add several other streets, along with some reflective tabs. We do have a new store coming in, in that location, that's actually gonna have quite a bit of lighting on that curve. Not that that's gonna be a total solution. This was part of, Lincoln Street was part of a, a design project, and we had worked with the county in hopes that they would pick up the West Side project. Right now, they have chosen not to due to the cost of the East Side project that they're working on. So, we can revisit, we did have a bid for lighting. We can revisit that. I can revisit that with Mr. Lino and see, and also have TNMP come back in. We already have a design from TNMP, as a matter of fact, and maybe see if we can revamp the design so it's not so costly, because we are, part of our design process for the Lincoln, West Lincoln, did include lighting. But obviously, it doesn't do us any good if we're not constructing the street, so I definitely can revisit that with the designer and see what kind of solutions we may be able to come up with. But as far as the striping, two of them actually already reached out today and said no, that they are unable to support or work in this region, or they're not in the region, they can't provide somebody in the region. But I haven't given up yet, you know, we'll get some people out here. We had some out before. So, it's, it's ongoing challenge sometimes, you know, but the lighting, I believe that new Dollar Tree store is going to provide some really nice lighting in that area because they're gonna have a huge parking lot on the southern end, along with the store. So, as commercial businesses grow there, I think that's gonna help a little bit. The roadway itself, you know, it's, we, you know, I really should be clocking how many potholes we fill in there a week. We have a lot of heavy traffic right now utilizing that route, and we need them to utilize that route outside of, to stay outside of neighborhoods. So, it's proven to be a challenge as a county road, you know. We're doing our best to stay on top of that, but...
Do you want to, um, visit with TNMP?
I'm sorry?
I'm trying not to talk too loud, my throat hurts, but, uh, visit with TNMP, maybe select poles that are already there.
Yeah.
Then with the transfer when it goes by, maybe we can add some lights in the part of the area to where we can light that up until, and get more money and then install more lights.
Yeah.
But if you want to, then go out there and, not tomorrow.
I'm here tomorrow.
I'm not.
I can't hate to do it in face of...
It's gonna be seventy-five tomorrow.
Some light is...
Tomorrow's the day.
Yes, ma'am. We got some lights.
So, there's lights, but they're further into the residential. I saw, I mean, I went back out through there and, you know, I noticed how they're kind of, you know, how they dispersed the lighting in the residential areas kind of at the alleys, I believe, right? Lincoln is a little different.
Yeah.
But I think, I agree with you. I think, you know, if we could just get maybe, not the whole, the whole setup, but maybe just some specific areas, especially on that corner. I agree, I don't like driving through there. I like, I don't, I can't see good at night, so I appreciate what you're seeing, you know, but that's why we're, with the striping, we're also looking at the reflective. So, as that striping slowly fades, because it does in this, in this region, those reflectors are, are great, especially when it rains. I can, I can see the road, you know?
I'm gonna say that of the people that have reached out to me, they probably are of a little bit senior age, if you say that, since I'm hard at that, but, you know, they're the ones going out there and we don't want to have an accident.
Yes.
And personally, I try and avoid it at night, but sometimes that's just the best route to take.
Yes. And we're, we're working, our street department is also looking at some solutions as well. You know, we are going to be, we're, you know, moving forward, text dots, striping has widened. Their, their specification has, has changed, and so the, the lines are larger or wider. And so, obviously, we're going to want that. I have talked with the county, I haven't talked with him recently, just, I just haven't. I was literally trying to have several areas throughout town striped, not just, not just Eddie and Lincoln. I mean, I've got Walthall, I've got Washington, Stafford, we have a lot of streets that we need to, you know, try to...
Are they paving the way?
Pardon?
Eddie Street, they're paving the way.
Yeah, well, it's meant to last a year, and that's, a year, yeah. Short of us going with a, another type of product, which is a lot more expensive, this was, it was fairly expensive, but, you know, you go to a thermoplastic type product, it, you know, it's that heavy material that is, it's put down with a torch, very much like you would with a, a flat roof and tar, that, that's how...
I've seen text, I've do it on...
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yes.
Maybe we need to spend a little bit more and not have to do it every year.
Yeah. The goal is, this other company, you know, we had, yes, we had the right paint. This is a water-based paint that's on Eddie Street right now. We were looking at the Gorilla Paint, which is very good for three to four years, you know. It, it just, that's what we have in our parking lot that we put over two years ago, you know, and so, we get a lot of traffic in our parking lot when we're not here, all kinds of traffic that pulls, that they don't follow the lines, I'll just put it that way. But, but that's a product that we know works really well in this city. And so, that was the, that was the intention.
If you want, Monday, when I'm back to work, I'll call you, maybe we can meet out there.
Yes.
Should you, if you find some poles, we can put up some lights and maybe keep the cost down to what I mean.
I'd appreciate that. Yes, I, I mean, we, it was, it was under fifty, but it was, it was still quite expensive for, for, for that solution, but I agree.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, at this time, we're gonna go into executive session under Government Code, section 551.071, conciliation with the 551.072 real estate, 551.074 personnel issues, 551.087 economic development, and it is 708 P. 551.087 Economic Development, and it is 708 P.
So we have F8 and F9?
I want to...
F9?
F8 and F9, second reading.
Okay.
And are we going to get anything on the HCA or whatever that is?
The finance special?
Yes.
H... H... HMC.
HFC.
I want to report, we're supposed to get one in November, but I want to report on citations next week. Either, our next meeting, either in the consent agenda items or an agenda item.
On citation, Ren?
Yeah.
An animal control report?
Code.
Yeah. Update on the audit.
Yes, sir.
Anything else for next meeting? Okay, we are adjourned and it's 9:30 PM.
I thought Sez was here.